All right. Is there anyone here for public comment? I have not no request for public comment. If you hear for public comment, please raise your hands. Seeing none. And without objection, I'd like to adjust the agenda to item F under new business and to allow our OPM and our architect to explain why we're here two days early than our originally posted meeting date and to explain a little bit about the importance of the recently adopted 2023 green schools program policies. So Ms. Williams, Mr. Olson, who's going to tee this up for us?
I can start and then the design team has a slide presentation. So I'll just start initially with the higher level of conversation. We had submitted to the MSBA our schematic design submission. And after that, we were informed a few days later that there's a new MSBA policy. And they were giving us an opportunity to review their updated green schools program policy and to see if this project was a candidate for that. So I know the information was sent out to the to the group with the five page policy. But in a nutshell, it was if we could fulfill certain requirements such as indoor air quality and fill additional requirements requirements to go from lead to lead silver that there would be instead of under their standard program up until this point in time of achieving reimbursement for 2% that we could be eligible if we proceeded with this for 4% reimbursement. So trying to give you the Reader's Digest version there. And so there's been a great effort made by this team, the design team, the engineers, the green engineers, et cetera, to really look at what was submitted in the submission. What is the differential in terms of design to to proceed this to perceive with this to see if it was achievable? And then what would be the cost impact in terms of expenditures and reimbursement? So I think I think that's about it for me. And I would like Craig to put his slide up and and just add lib a little more if you think.
Before you do that, Mr. Olson, just quickly, two things. One is that for the building committee members, please note that the slide presentation that Mr. Olson is going to be utilizing this evening was a work in progress, I believe, right up until this meeting tonight. So I was not able to get this out to any of our members. Also, I'd like, because we are going to be meeting jointly with the district committee, and I also have to welcome the members of the district committee very this evening at 6:45, I'd like to see if we can keep this presentation to about 20 minutes and with a little extra time for questions at the end. So but I do want to get to the joint meeting with the district committee at 6:45. Without no further ado, Mr. Olson, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Yeah, this should be a fairly quick presentation. We only got a few slides. It's it's relatively straightforward. So let me share my sharing that screen, get my present, the presentation going. So we appreciate everybody adjusting their schedule and just as a result. And as Mary Ann mentioned, this was brought to us after we submitted. So what it really boils down to is we wanted to give you these, these are slides you've seen before as far as the 53.09 is the base rate, the anticipated rate, and then the effective rate. So what we did, and again, this is what was presented and approved at the May 31st school building committee meeting, this slide here. So we just want to give that for reference. And but what we really wanted to talk about, and as they presented it to us, we knew we had to do our evaluations and understand what their current require, we knew what their current requirements are, but what the proposed, which gives an additional 2% reimbursement and what it really means to the projects. So we and that because there is costs associated with it on this decision, it's not a decision we felt we could make without reviewing it with the building committee and having an agreement from the building committee that this is a good decision. So ultimately, what we're looking at is the green schools policy that we had originally talked about. As you can see, is on the left with the minimum requirements that the lead certification, as we've talked in previous meetings, being 10% better than the energy code. As I mean, and then for is the minimum requirements from an MSBA project. And then to get an additional 2%, you need to be 20% better than the energy code. We had always anticipated that, and that was built into that original 56.03 based reimbursement rate that we had been talking about. But what they've changed with the new requirements is they've up the the we'll call they'll up the ante on it, and they've required that the building, a minimum requirements under the proposed is to achieve a minimum of silver as well as the categories that you see there. That remains unchanged. So what we've highlighted in really orange are the two major things that changed from the minimum, just from an MSBA project is to be silver as well as meet the requirements of the stretch code. And then for the additional reimbursement, as you could see below, what they're saying is you can get 3% if you meet the minimum requirements of the opt-in in the specialized code standards, which I'll explain in a minute. And then you can get an additional 1% if you achieve five of seven points available in the indoor air quality points noted above. So what we've done, and this came out just a week and a half ago for us, we worked with our our sustainability consultant, our green design, as well as working with our engineers and everything to kind of provide a commentary what that really means for this project and how it is is first, we worked with our sustainable design consultant and confirmed that lead silver is achievable. It's something that based on everything that we've done to date is something that's definitely achievable. Looking at even recent projects that we've done, we believe that that it is achievable task. The other items that are as far as what's required is meeting the stretch code. Well, the project was already already met this requirement because Bolton has a stretch code community. And then as we evaluated more as the opt-in specialized code related to this project would being designing, the system would have to be an all electric system, which, again, we already met that requirement with the geothermal design as being an all electric system. Purely as we've talked about that there's no gas to the site already, so we already had to be an all electric system. So we already qualified for that as part of this project as well as evaluating the final one, the 1% is meeting a minimum of five points from seven. And again, we evaluated that a lot of those are construction and what materials are used. We evaluated those against recent projects that we've done from a lead standpoint. And before we even were required by the MSBA to achieve that five points as a minimum, we always had to have three before. We were getting five and six points already, so that we believe it's an achievable task as well. So what that really means to this project as a whole and simple is the project already met all the minimum and additional requirements under the new, under the proposed green schools pro policy. What that also, when we did evaluate this, is make sure there wasn't any cost drivers that would that and what in our evaluation is there was no additional cost to the project. So the project budget wouldn't actually increase by the district deciding to look at the additional reimbursement. So what you're seeing here on this slide and Mary Ann, I'll let you kind of chime in in a minute here is we're working with MSBA as we talked about through this project scope and budget. The we work what was eligible and what's ineligible. And the on the left, you'll see the total project budget was those previous approvals, the 241 million 714 with the total maximum reimbursement of about 6.62.3 approximately million is the total maximum reimbursement from the MSBA. What we do know is basically it increases your reimbursement by 2% under the proposed, which with no additional cost to the project. So what it does is it basically essentially puts an additional 2 millions, 2.1 million of additional reimbursement from the MSBA to the project without us really doing anything other than what we'd already planned on doing. So we we think as a project team that it's kind of a a no brainer in a standpoint of that, but we don't want to make a decision like this without reviewing it with the building committee and having the the building committee agree with this approach. So Mary Ann, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that.
Sorry, I was muted. What I do want to add is we're in the process of MSBA review. We're answering questions. Some of the numbers are going up, up a little, down a little, et cetera. But based, but the information that we plugged in on the right hand side for proposed is based on a draft of the project funding agreement from the MSBA that they sent that we kept pushing them for this. And they said, well, we haven't finished our final review. It goes through several people. So they put a lot of caveats on this, so we're going to put the same caveats on it to say that as it stands today, it's looking like that there's additional reimbursement to the project, whether it's, you know, one and a half to 2 million more than what we anticipated. What we anticipated originally was 63,135,000. It looks like our reimbursement is about 1% less than what we had anticipated from the district for the district from the MSBA. But we are currently in conversations trying to be persuasive about some of the vocational programs and seeing if we can loosen them up a little bit in our interpretation and reading of what's eligible versus ineligible. So long, long story short, to do this, right, regardless of to do this additional requirement to seek the additional 2% reimbursement for a total of 4% reimbursement, we it, we don't see any additional cost to the project. And so participating really would just be an opportunity for taking advantage of the additional reimbursement because we're we're saying we're going to do this. So it would require us to either stay the course or to amend our submission to the MSBA and provide some amended narratives around mechanicals, sustainability and architecture. So hopefully that wasn't too long winded there, but our perspective, we would recommend that this would actually, there's a net gain here for the district to pursue this.
All right, thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Olson, do you have anything further?
Nope.
Okay. Mary Ann, you all set?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay. Before I open it up to, before I entertain a motion, I should say, I'd like to open it up to questions. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Williams or Mr. Olson or any of his team? I'm not seeing any. So at this time, Mary Ann, do we need anything specific on the language for the motion? Or is it, can we move as printed in the agenda?
I think you can move as printed in the agenda and essentially that we would want approval from from this group because this group made the recommendation to the school committee that they authorized us to submit the the schematic design submission to the MSBA. We we see it as going through the same process that we would want this group to make a recommendation to the school committee to allow us to amend because we are changing scope to the project.
All right. So the way the agenda reads is to we've decided whether they're going to comply with the 2023 green schools program policies and to amend the schematic design submission and total project budget and to make that recommendation to the district committee. Is that that fairly encompass what we need to do here this evening?
Yes.
It does. Okay. So with that in mind, I'll entertain a motion in that regard.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Yesway. Do you have a second?
I can.
Who's second to that?
Mr. Downing.
Mr. Dow, Superintendent Downing, thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, let me call the roll. Ms. Viverito.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Sikansky. Did he yes, Bob?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Yes. Okay. Yes. Thank you. Mr. Fromer.
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Kendall.
Yes.
Ms. Dupuy.
Yes.
Ms. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Yesway.
Yay.
Mr. Echol. I'll come back to you, Rich. Mr. Nicholson.
Yes.
Superintendent Downing.
Yes.
Ms. Rich.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Tanya. Thought you might be engaged. Okay. Myself, yes, and Rich Echol going once, going twice. Okay. So that motion passes. We'll just put Mr. Echol down as not answering. All right. So without any objection, I'll go back to the beginning of the agenda and seek approval of the meeting minutes of our meeting of June 15th, 2023.
Joe, really quickly, I don't actually, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't see Rich on the Zoom call.
He just, he just fell off.
Okay.
When I was calling the roll, he was there, but now he's he's gone, so.
But that doesn't affect your quorum.
No, 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 we've got a very strong quorum tonight. I'm pleasantly surprised. Thank you very much for everybody being here this evening. All right. Minutes of the June 15th, 2023 meeting. They were in the meeting packet. Does anybody have any? First of all, let me entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. Do you have a second? Okay, thank you. Any discussion, amendments, changes, alterations, modifications? Seeing none. I will call the roll Superintendent Downing.
Hi.
Ms. Nicholson.
Yes.
Ms. Rich.
Yes.
Mr. Yesway.
I was not present.
Okay. Ms. Early.
Yes.
Ms. Dupuy.
Yes.
Ms. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Fromer.
Yes.
Mr. Sikansky.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
And Ms. Viverito. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is a report from the chairperson. I don't have much to report on. I will just report out that in a discussion with my two co chairs today and with the superintendent, we'd like to think about moving up our presentation of our anticipated that exclusionary vote and the funding for this project to August and to present some preliminary figures to our local select boards in August as opposed to September in advance of the special town meetings. Superintendent Downing has informed me today that there are three dates, excuse me, two dates in August scheduled for our appearances before the select boards from the three sending communities. Lancaster will be the 21st of August at 6:00 PM. Bolton and Stowe will be the 22nd of August, both at 7:00 PM.
Excuse me, Mr. Gleason.
Yes, Superintendent Downing.
That may have been an error. Bolton will be Thursday, August 24th.
All right, thank you. August 24th. Thank you, Mr. Downing.
And I spoke with all three of the town administrators today. They, of course, have to confirm with their chairs to set those agendas.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. Just to confirm, Ms. Cohen, there's no report from your CEO subcommittee tonight, correct?
Yeah, we have not met since the last school building committee. And the only work that's been done is to respond to questions submitted via the website, which has been done. So that's it.
Thank you very much. Before I turn it over to Ms. Williams for her OPM report, I didn't want to mention, and forgive me if I'm stealing your thunder, Mary Ann, you did not mention it during the presentation on the green schools program policies. But I had a discussion with Ms. Williams late last week, and she intimated to me that we're probably going to be the first school district in Commonwealth to avail ourselves of these newly adopted program policy, program policies. So I just wanted to sort of reinforce that point and kind of justifies the the need for this expediated meeting date that from the 18th. So thank you very much for that, Ms. Williams. So I'm going to turn it over to you at this point for your OPM report and turn it up, take it away.
Okay, great. Thank you. So what I'm going to report on initially, which has been the other big thing that we have been working on as a group is CM selection. So we received what they call statements of qualifications from five firms, Consigli Construction, Fontaine Demio Joint Venture, Gilbane Building Company, Shawmit Design and Construction and Suffolk Construction. These are major players in the market. So over since we received the applications, we, as a group, had reviewed them, checked references, et cetera. And we met yesterday, the CM selection committee and discussed and evaluated the statement of qualifications received by those five firms. And the CM selection subcommittee members found that the following firms listed alphabetically have met the mandatory requirements for qualifications and were deemed as qualified and unranked. And we will be inviting them to respond to a request for proposal for the Noshoberg Regional High School project. And so there was a motion made to invite all five firms who had submitted formal proposals. And and that it was deemed that they were qualified in all five firms. All five firms would remain unranked. So as a as a final update, the request for proposals went out to the five firms today, and we anticipate that we'll be receiving responses from them on August 15th. And then we will go through the next round of evaluation, which we will then rank those firms, assuming that their proposals are fully responsive. And we'll have what they call technical proposals as well as pricing proposals. So we will have an opportunity then to go to interviews on September 7th and 8th and make our final evaluation and recommendation of the the CM that should be selected for this project.
Mary Ann, could you just repeat the five firms again?
Yes. The five firms are Consigli Construction, Fontaine Demio Joint Venture, Gilbane Building Company, Shawmit Design and Construction and Suffolk Construction.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is there anything further?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Mulcaren for being here. I know he was very busy this afternoon. So I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Mulcaren and or Superintendent Downing for an update on our bond advisory subcommittee.
Oh, I, Mr. Mulcaren, are you ready?
I I am here, yes.
Great.
Take it away, Ross. Great, thank you. So you provide an update that we have formed our bond advisory subcommittee. We are going to meet the first week of August, although we may, given the school committee meeting on the second, try to be flexible with that date and get it ahead of that meeting. But we have initially are doing our initial reach out to our bond advisors over at Hilltop Securities, and they're going to be presenting some options to that subcommittee that first week in August to give us a sense of what our potential options are, and then we can gain feedback and insight from the representatives from the from the member towns with regards to what will be the best strategy moving forward with borrowing for the potential high school.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mulcaren. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Mulcaren in regards to the bond advisory subcommittee? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on with the agenda to the Vote Yes Ballot Initiative. I can say with certain amount of confidence that there's nothing further to announce in regards to the ballot vote that the Vote Yes Ballot Initiative that we had originally suggested might be offshoot or intended to the work of our CEO subcommittee. But there's nothing further that we have to report on that at this point. I'd like to open the floor up to Ms. Viverito and Ms. Cohen, if they have any comments in regards to that Vote Yes Ballot Initiative.
Go ahead, Amy. Sorry, there's noise in the background in my household right now. Leah, do you want to say anything? No, I I don't think that there's much to say here. Just that one Vote Yes Ballot Initiative Committee has not materialized from any of the communities. So we will rely upon the public record and the work of private residents to speak their mind as as we get closer and closer. I think the one thing that I feel pretty strongly about, and I think I talked to Joe about this earlier and Mary Ann, actually, is that I think it's a really good idea for us to create a roadmap of activity for the project. So by my count, I think we have about eight weeks until the special town meetings, thereabouts. And things are going to be happening fast and furious. And I think it's a, it would be a really good idea for us to identify all the milestones between now and those special town meetings so that not only committee members, but also the public can, you know, avail themselves of those resources. And so perhaps it's going to be a parallel track where we identify kind of front of house timelines and back of house timelines, things that are relevant maybe only to committee members, both school committee and school building committee and construction management, subcommittees and all of the subcommittees. So those back of house dates, I think, should be published. And I think also the front of house date should be published so that the community knows, you know, when is that last high school tour? There various things because without the Vote Yes Ballot Initiative Committee to kind of put those things before the communities, I think we just need to get it all into the public record.
Thank you, Ms. Viverito. Amy, did you have anything to add?
No, Leah did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was chaos in my household at that moment.
I see that Mr. Fromer has a question.
Yeah, I guess I'm just a little concerned that we're not out in front of the public enough. And it it came after the last presentation that we had. And our presentations, nobody goes to. A lot of effort gets into those, nobody goes to them. We get one or two new people, they come to the wrong time, they don't know what's going on. And questions been asked to me is why aren't there yard signs out there? Why aren't there things in the face of the public right now saying vote yes? I and I had some comments from former and previous even staff people within the district that I've heard from that I had one person ask the question of, well, why do we even need a new school? They're just, you know, we're going to not probably not vote because we could just fix the old one. And it really wasn't until the last presentation that Kirk brought up the fact, and this was even, I didn't even realize this as much, that we would lose accreditation. Kirk can speak to this a little bit more. And what that ramification is to the towns, people have no idea. So there is a slight uptick in people saying, we're not going to vote for this thing. Why bother? We don't need it, we can renovate it. And I just, I'm very concerned, we're not in front of nobody other, other this group and some rumors knows what's going on. We need yard signs out there, we need stuff. And I'm if, you know, if I have to get on the subcommittee or whatever, I'm happy to do it. But we're just, and this is feedback from, I'm hearing from people in town. They know nothing what's going on. And I just, I'm throwing it out there, I'm willing to do what we need to do, but we need to do something.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Fromer. Go ahead, Ms. Cohen.
Yeah, I, you know, Ken, I'm glad that you brought that up. I hear what you're saying, and I think that part of the complication that we've run into is that there is a legitimate concern about members of this subcommittee acting in that role.
members of this subcommittee acting in that role. Based on reach out to the OPCF and Ethics Commission. And Leah, I, I know that you personally reached out to them today and I, saw an email but didn't read it. So I don't know if you would like to speak more to this, but the CEO Subcommittee, it, I think the consensus was that it was better for voters and residents of our communities to step into this role rather than members of this committee due to potential perception of a conflict of interest or having access to information that others may not have. So.
I guess I don't, I mean, I don't understand why it's a conflict of interest if this committee is saying, is trying to encourage people in the towns to vote for what we're sitting here, you know, quite frankly, have been on this committee for what, a year and a half, two years almost? And we can't go out and tell people to vote and put a sign on our yard? I think that that's crazy. You know, I, I, I don't know. I get held up by bureaucracy in this crap lot and I don't agree with it. And we're going to lose and we're going to have wasted a year and a half of a lot of people's times if we don't do something very, very soon.
All right, before I move on, Ms. Viverito, this is one of those rare instances where I actually hold, I'm at my home for this meeting and I always seem to have problems with connectivity here. So if perchance you see me disappear, please step up and do that thing that you do. Okay. Thank you. Superintendent Downing, go ahead.
Yeah, to Mr. Farmer's point, the, the basic rule of thumb is we can't use district resources to promote the project. That's why I can't even promote the project through weekly email addresses to the community. That's against, that's an ethics violation. As citizens using money from their own pockets, they can participate in this committee. And as a private citizen, promote the project. We just cannot use school district or public funds in the printing of materials or the communication of those materials to promote of approval of the project. An example of this is I'm going to be appearing at the Bolton Energy Fair. I'm going to go with my table and my tent, all of our board briefs and be there to avail myself to answer questions. And if people come to my table to collect the information, I'm within the ethics. If I ask that organization to distribute my material, that's against the ethics violation. So there's nuances to that. But Ken, I couldn't agree with you more. It's, it, it's going to have to be run by folks that are, that are out there. And, and I'm struggling with how to get that out there as well.
But Kirk, to your point, if we had one of the committee members who's a resident in one of these towns sitting at your tent, we could then distribute that information. Is that?
Absolutely, because people are approaching the tent and asking for it. So in other words, it's not being forced or distributed upon them using public funds. They're coming to the tables and say, hey, tell me about the building project. And we tell them about the building project.
But and, and there's nothing to prevent us from being at that same thing.
Correct.
And approaching somebody as, as residents with information that's printed.
As residents, yes, as residents, yes.
Go ahead, Leah.
Uh, yeah, so we don't have anybody who stepped forward to take over a yes committee. We, Amy and I, I know specifically have reached out to many individuals. And everybody is just overtaxed and nobody's willing, has been willing to take it on. So as soon as you start raising money, it's like a whole new bucket of fish. And so that's why the signs are not happening because we would need to engage in a pretty sophisticated fundraising initiative that also then needs to be tracked through the Office of Campaign Finance. And there's all kinds of disclosures that need to be filed, et cetera. And so people just get, have been spooked by all of that work. And nobody is willing to kind of bring it through to fruition. The signs are expensive, I know personally. They also can take time to print and they can also be delayed. And so with this time crunch happening at this point, eight weeks, I actually don't think that even if we started today, we would be able to get signs on lawns. And so, but that, that can't even be us. We can't speak using our titles. We can't speak to anybody using any note, any knowledge that we have that's not in the public record. However, after I talked to the Ethics Commission today, I also talked to the Campaign Finance Office. They basically said that as private citizens, we can step outside of our official roles and speak to why we are going to vote yes. And we can provide information about our personal opinion, but it cannot be from our official role. And so that creates a lot of tricky area and the ramifications can feel a little like of making a bad, a wrong step are pretty significant. And could have negative consequences for us as individuals and, and the school district as a whole. So as bureaucratic as it is and as frustrated as I am too, Ken, I think that we are between a rock and a hard place. We reached out to the PTOs. I think that they also were just feeling overtaxed and there isn't consensus for those organizations to take on a Vote Yes Committee. And so there are other ways that individual, so first of all, if anybody's listening to this meeting and you want to run a Vote Yes Ballot Initiative, reach out to either Joe or to me or to Amy Cohen. And we can kind of point you in the right direction, but we cannot assist you in our official capacity. So if anybody's out there and wants to do that, let us know. If not, and that committee doesn't materialize, there are other ways that private residents, whether they hold official positions or do not, and are not employees of the district, they can actually act in ways that you were just describing, Ken.
Thank you, Ms. Viverito. I, I think the bottom line is that as far as any ballot initiative is concerned, they just really can't have any connectivity to this to this committee or to the district itself. So with that in mind, are there any further questions or any comments in regards to this? And by the way, thank you, Leah. This is exactly what we wanted to hear this evening. Wanted to have some announcement regarding, you know, the, the, the ability of anybody who's out there listening who has no connection to our committee. They certainly have the, the option of starting their own ballot initiative at their, at their discretion. Okay, so I did get a, actually, I'm going to, I got a comment in the, in the chat and I, I would ask that if there are people in district committee members as well, if you have questions, please raise your hand. I will recognize you. We're ahead of schedule and looks like we'll get this. We'll get the, we'll get to our meeting on time. We've got much left after that, but Superintendent, Ms. Reinhardt had a question, or should I say Dr. Reinhardt had a question regarding the September public, excuse me, the September school tours. Jackie, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I actually went on a tour myself and that was pretty eye opening for me as a private citizen prior to being elected to serve on the school committee. So I know and talking with individuals in my local community and circle of acquaintances having strongly encouraged people to take advantage of that. But given this accelerated timeframe, I didn't know if that would be something that we could offer additional tours.
Could give us, you want to respond or?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's actually on the schedule, Dr. Reinhardt. It is scheduled for, I believe, Saturday. Taking a moment to load, one moment, please. There we go. I believe those are scheduled for Saturday, September ninth. I'm going to be talking with Mr. Friesel when he returns from his family vacation next week, along with our communication specialist, Bridgette Hanigan, on communicating that. Yes, we are going to offer more tours and we do them on that day. We're going to do a couple of times during the day to give people options to come in.
Thank you.
And we'll be pushing those announcements out through the social media channels as we get closer to that date.
Ms. Kendall.
Hi, this was just in response to, I think, some of the getting the information out there. And I know some of the stuff that I've done with districts in the past is more social media outputs. We put together a lot of little videos aiming for about thirty to sixty seconds to share on social media clips that were just informational. So something that the design team and the OPM could help implement stuff that, you know, we had implemented for our, our teams in the past. That whether they be about the proposed design, the existing conditions, and the, what a vote yes or a vote no means. They were very helpful and well received by the community and those little visual snippets that can be shared in a social media outlet. They can be shared by a vote yes, a vote no, or even on the district page if they're purely informational. Were very helpful. I think those type of small informational chunks are something that, you know, the everyday person feels a little bit more easily consumed than attending a long meeting with a lot of information that is not to their interest. But we had a record turnout in that district that we did this for, for the vote and a record approval for the new school.
Mr. Chair, may I be recognized?
I think he's frozen.
Oh.
I'm taking over. Go ahead, Kirk.
Kristen, thank you for that. We did take some video footage from our tours and I know Bridgette has been advised by the Ethics Office that we couldn't use that information. So I think what I'm going to do is reach out to Ms. Hanigan, and if you don't mind, we'll reach out to you directly to learn of the strategy that you used to ensure that we're in compliance.
I would just say too that my hand is raised just to confirm that the district and the design team could put out a roadmap of dates over the, and I guess that would be Bridget, Kirk, but through you. Can we kind of construct that to put on the website? All right, Mary Ann, is that okay?
Yes, we can develop dates, but they can't, they're not going to come all from us. It's, we, we need to have a collaboration of folks providing us information. It's it's not a problem to put a calendar together. But I think what's really important is, is to have a champion in each of the three communities so that there's some grassroots organizing that's taking place here. Because we have developed a lot of information that could be utilized, whether they're the board briefs and the many presentations we've put together. We've done seven public forums. We have no problem with participating here. There's just certain things we can't, we can't do for you. We, we, it needs to be a Vote Yes Committee and a champion who's, who's going to provide this information. I mean, Attaborough High School as an example, they, they developed a Vote Yes Committee and and every week they had an article on the front page of the local newspaper. But they were able to fund that and pay for those ads because they had raised money. And, and they had those champions that were out and, you know, whether it was talking to people at, you know, baseball games, soccer games, et cetera. It was like just building the momentum and the conversation and and, and engaging other people to participate with this process.
I'm going to go over to Amy.
Yeah, a few things. I think that the CEO Subcommittee, honestly, when that Subcommittee was started, this is exactly what I had kind of envisioned it doing, but I think that I didn't anticipate the complications from using district resources to kind of get the word out that, that I've come up against recently. And for me, I found it to be very tricky to navigate that, you know, and steer clear of any potential pitfalls like Leah was, was had, had mentioned. So that has definitely got in the way of the work that I was hoping to do through that Subcommittee. That being said, I think that, you know, all of us volunteering to serve on this Subcommittee have been acting as champions within our towns and trying to get the word out as, as much as possible through those conversations on the soccer fields and the baseball fields and, and, you know, with other parents. And I, I'd like the CEO Subcommittee, if we can, and this doesn't present any conflicts, to work with Ms. Hanigan to, to come up with some informational bullet points that she could create social media posts about, because that is one thing that's working well now is that we do have social media platforms that as individuals, I have been, as an individual, I have been sharing out through different platforms. And so I think that that work has been done to develop that channel and we, we should try to use it as much as possible because that, that is something that's already up and running. But certainly anyone listening who, who thinks that they would like to be taking on more of a role, please, please reach out to me. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. So guys, just keeping our eye on the clock here, a couple more minutes, but I have two hands up. So Ken, go ahead and then we'll go over to David.
Yeah, just real quick, is there, I guess, is there anything in, in on this line of, you know, Facebook and, and social media posting, is there anything preventing regular posts every other day or what from either the Community Outreach Program or from Mrs. Hanigan? Just get, because one of the things that happened when Lancaster just had the, the last vote, yes, there were yard signs, but there was a lot of talk on Facebook in the different Lancaster groups. But quite honestly, I don't see the same thing from either, I, I mean, there is a, something every week or so, maybe, you know, there isn't much chatter on Facebook about it. And there, honestly, there needs to be more because that's the way, that's the way they got things done in Lancaster in this last vote. So I, I, it's just, we need to be doing more than just the conversations because I know the conversations are great, but they're not reaching the entire audience that's out there because there are a lot of not parent, you know, people who aren't parents that aren't at the soccer games, that aren't at the same places that we are that have a different opinion about this. And we've got to reach them. And unfortunately, for as much as Facebook is annoying, that's one way to reach out to them. And you, you could see it in that last vote. And then I guess the other, the second question, is there any reason why committee members from this committee can't make private donations to the Community Outreach Program to provide signs, yard signs?
What Community Outreach Program?
Well, our, sorry, our, our Community Outreach Subcommittee. If our Community Outreach Subcommittee were to come up with a yard sign, is there anything preventing private citizens from providing donations to that effort?
Yeah, so this, this committee and our CEO Subcommittee cannot act as the ballot question committee. It needs to be filed on with the IR, like with the Ethics Commission and I think the IRS as like a separate entity. And then they need to fundraise and then disclose. And once you start raising money, you need to keep it incredibly separate. And so if somebody out there in the community other than us wants to start a yes ballot question committee, then reach out to me, in particular, reach out to Amy, Joe. We can point you in the right direction. And then if you want to start raising money quick and then purchase signs quick, we, you could probably make it happen, but we cannot raise money as a committee. And that's very bureaucratic. So I apologize if that's not a great answer.
Well, what about the additional, like the flooding of social media?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, the, the, social media is tricky because we did engage in a little bit of this about a month ago and it unleashed about four individuals who dominated the conversation with misinformation. And so it's a really tricky environment. So I think that there are other methods that can be employed by private citizens and in trying to reach the communities, I think social media is part of that, but it can't, it can't be the only solution because there's, it's so easy to derail the truth on social media, as we all know.
But if that's the only thing people are hearing, that's the truth then, right? I mean, we're, that, that's my, my problem right now. The only thing I'm hearing in is negative stuff and then we, but we can't do anything about it. So it's, we've got to do something. We're not, I, I'm sorry, we're just, as a committee as a whole, we're not doing enough to get it out there. I, I, I've talked to people since the last, and for as great as the presentations that our OPM and our tech make, nobody shows up to them. The, the only people who show up to them other than, you know, there's usually two or three people other than committee members or people who are directly involved in this. So the word's not getting out there, folks. We're, we're going to have a problem right now. I see it happening. And I'm sorry, I'm getting agitated about this, but I, I am because I've spent so much time on this that I see it getting derailed very quickly and and we're being held up by bureaucracy. And now it's the first time we're kind of really getting engaged in this conversation about it. And, you know, I just looked, I could get five hundred yard signs in three days on Vistaprint for a thousand dollars. And it's like,
Do you, do you know, Ken, do, do you know somebody who can start a Vote Yes Committee? And if you do?
I'm, I'm texting people right now, but we're talking about, I guess I'm frustrated because we're talking about this on the nineteenth or the eighteenth of, of July. And I know every time we talk about this in the meeting, it gets pushed off to the next meeting and pushed off to the next meeting. And it wasn't till the last meeting that I really realized how bad it was out there that, that we're, we're not being heard. And I, we got, I, I don't know, I don't, I guess if I have, yeah, I don't know. I, I really don't know.
So, so Ken, I'm gonna, I'm gonna um, say, point taken. Got it. I see that Joe is back, which is uh, very exciting. Great job, Joe, for persevering back into the meeting.
It's Lancaster, it's Lancaster, I apologize.
Oh, it's okay. Um, I did promise David uh, the last word here and then as Scott's comment has indicated, uh, we do need to get to the District Committee meeting. David, go ahead.
For whomever can answer, is there anything unethical with the, our PTO uh, taking and then communicating a position?
So there are rules around this uh, related to using district resources, which oftentimes the PTOs do do. It's also whether or not.
Leah, the PTOs are not allowed to use district resources. It, whenever they use a copy machine, they have to, they're obligated to, their, their own independent 501(c)(3) organizations. So that they, but they have to submit their budgets, of course. So um, they do work independent of the district in that way.
I would just say that as long as they're not using district resources, that's fine. The other piece though is that um, you would have to get the PTO to agree that they support the project.
Sure.
And so um, they can definitely be part of a vote yes ballot initiative if they choose to be. Um, in my, in my last conversations with each of them, um, there was really no traction there.
All right, thank you Leah. Um, thank you for taking over with my absence. Uh, I'm going to pack the table to you at this time so that we can start our joint meeting with the District Committee.
Excellent. And we don't need to adjourn and then reopen, right Joe?
No, we do not.
Okay, everybody. So um, I do see that we have a quorum of school committee here. If I'm not mistaken, at least the last time I checked, we did. Okay. So uh, on the agenda for the regular school committee meeting, uh, the first is to call that meeting to order, which is now at six fifty-three. Um, this special meeting of the Nishoba Regional School Committee will begin. Uh, the only item on our agenda, and uh, before I get there, I will just say thank you very much to the school committee members who could attend tonight. Um, kind of this pop fly meeting. Really appreciate you all being here. It is ultimately to deliberate uh, the vote that the School Building Committee just took to recommend to us, the District Committee, to allow the designer uh, design team to amend the schematic design and total project scope and budget submission to better address um, the green schools initiative. And so Joe, would you mind if I turn to you for a motion for our school committee? Do you think you could do it?
Yeah, I um, I would move that the District Committee uh, adopt and approve the recommendation of the Nishoba Regional High School Building Committee in regards to compliance with the twenty twenty-three green schools program policies. And to direct our uh, OPM and our architects to amend our schematic design submission and total project budget accordingly.
I'm gonna second that. Thanks, Joe. Uh, so for our other five school committee members who are here, do you guys have any questions? I know that many of you are here when the design team presented, but anything that you want to know in addition to that, or if you weren't here, any questions you have? Yeah, Scott.
So I, I admit I missed a little bit of the presentation, but I got the impression there weren't actually much or any design changes being made, but that due to some regulatory changes, we were gonna get a bigger reimbursement. Um, did I misunderstand something?
So I'll turn to our designers. Um.
Uh, no, that is a very accurate way to state it. This, uh, what we had to do is just change some of the documentation um, to, that a lot, sort of aligns with the narratives ou, outlined in the new green school policy. Um, and just committing to that. Um, so, but as far as design of the building and budget, um, cost of the project, um, total project cost, there's no change, there would be no change.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks Craig. Uh, Shondor, did that answer your question?
Oh, yes, it did.
Great. Any other questions from the school committee? All right, I'm not seeing any, though. Correct me if I'm wrong. All right, so I'm gonna take the roll. So Shondor.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Amy?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Scott?
Yes.
And I think that's everyone making it unanimous. Great. So thanks again, everybody for joining us. Thank you to the design team for bringing us this opportunity. Uh, Mary Ann?
Yes, um, is there um, a way that we can get approved minutes for this versus waiting until August?
Um, minutes for the School Building Committee meeting?
Yes, School Building Committee and, and School Committee vote.
I don't think meeting, uh, second meeting is posted similar to the way we've done in the past. Kirk, is that right? Yeah, so I.
Yeah, uh, I was not aware we needed to do that. We did not post to close this meeting and open another meeting to certify the minutes.
Okay, that, that's fine. We'll, we'll tell the MSBA that the initiative was approved. And if we need certified minutes, we'll follow up with that.
We will make sure to put that on the Octo, August second agenda as well.
Okay, that'd be great.
Great. All right, anything else for the good of this order?
I'm not sure. I had to move to adjourn the uh, special joint meeting of the District Committee and the, the Nishoba Regional High School Building Committee and that we go back to the regular agenda on the Building Committee.
You did just move to do that?
I did.
And I'll second. Any discussion or no discussion on adjournment?
Discussion on that.
Yeah. So I'm gonna vote yes. Shondor?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
Excellent. Again, thank you, school committee members. Appreciate you being here.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Verrito, for taking over in my absence. All right, we're gonna continue with the agenda. Uh, onto new business item A. Uh, approval of invoice twenty-one from Scanseki USA and invoice number eighteen from Kesselboos Associates. Uh, as always, I turn it to Mr. Mel Karen. Um, are you with me, Ross? All right, um, me being disposed. So I'll um, throw it over to Superintendent Downing.
Uh, thank you Attorney Gleason. Um, uh, before you are the recent invoices, I did speak with Mr. Mel Karen today. He has reviewed those invoices, uh, as of I. They're in line with district policies in our contract and uh, recommend approval of those invoices.
Thank you Superintendent Downing. Um, I got a motion to approve these invoices.
No move?
Thank you, Mr. Skansky. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Verrito. Is there any further discussion or any discussion at all on approval of these uh, two invoices, invoice twenty-one from Scanseka and invoice eighteen from Kesselboos Associates? Okay, seeing none? I'll start with Mr. Skansky.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Fromer?
Yes.
Ms. Kendall?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Puit?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Yesway?
Yay.
Uh, Mr. Echol, are you with us?
I am. I voted affirmatively.
Yes. Um, Ms. Rich, are you still with us?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Superintendent Downing?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Verrito?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. All right, um, discussion approval of budget revision request number one. Um, Mary Ann, am I turning this over to you?
Uh, no, to me.
Oh, see, sorry about that.
No, no problem. So what um, the budget request, revision request number one is to basically um, reallocate all the money uh, from the various, the four categories and put them into where we uh, committed the costs. So if you look at um, at uh, the first one is is that we're moving money from the environmental and site uh, from others to environmental site and that, that's to cover all the um, the amendments that we have approved throughout the um, the schematic, the PSR um, module three and four for KBA. And um, and if you look at, at the supporting documents, you know, it shows where um, what the cost of, of the the fee for, for the amendments, various amendments and which category went to. So that's, that's what um, the first item does. And then the second item is um, moving the OPM money to the others because we originally had four hundred and fifty budgeted and our contract for Scanseka is four twenty-three, four eighty. Um, same thing for the next item is the, is the A and A, A and E feasibility study for nine hundred. And then with the various amendments, you know, the, the new total is eight eighty-two. So then we're just moving that money over. So, and that's, that's what basically what uh, BRR number one is. And just moving the money, it doesn't increase our budget. So, what we have of the one point five million.
Thank you, Ms. Wynn. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Skansky.
I, I was looking at this spreadsheet. Is other unspent?
Y, yes. So if the, right, currently, right now, we have forty-one thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. That's, that's uh, that's gonna be remaining for the feasibility study. Out of the, out of the uh, one point five million.
Okay, um, where did I see this? Um, all right, but, but other, on the second page of this, it says other is fifty thousand six twenty-seven. Is, that's different than the forty-one thousand you were talking about just now.
Yes, because, because we already spent um, the, the revised budget, the allocation of the one point five million uh, went from the feasibility study, which is dated uh, you know, June of twenty twenty-one to the revised budget. So it's just reallocating the money. And of that fifty thousand six twenty-seven, we spent nine hun, nine thousand one hundred and twenty-two. So that's where the balance remaining is.
Okay, so that's, all right. I got you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skansky. Uh, time for the questions for um, Mr. Wynn. See, do we need a vote, a motion to approve this?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I will entertain Sam at this time.
Uh, I move to approve uh, budget revision number one.
Thank you, Ms. Skansky. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Wynn. Um, any further discussion on this matter? Seeing none? Mr. Skansky?
Yes.
Mr. Fromer?
Yes.
Ms. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Puit?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Yesway?
Yay.
Uh, Mr. Echol?
Yes, affirmative.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Superintendent Downing?
Yes.
Ms. Verrito?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. Um, relative to item C, um, there is no approval needed on the shortlist of construction management firms. Um, I would open the floor to Mr. Skansky if he wants to say anything in this regard, being our chair of our selection Subcommittee. Bob, do you have anything further to add on this, Greg?
Um, no, I think um, Mary Ann did a very good job of explaining where we are on it. It was basically um, who's, who's qualified to present formal bids. And, and as she repeated it, we did, we did no ranking of the firms at this, at this stage of the consideration. We had five firms uh, claim that they were qualified to bid and we agreed with them. So they're, all five are on to the next round.
Thank you, Ms. Skansky. And just for those of you who don't know, Ms. Skansky is the chair of our CM Selection Subcommittee. So if you have any questions in regards to the selection process, uh, I see Mr. Yesway has a question, so go ahead.
Uh, just to make a, a quick comment, it's great to see that five are in the mix. Um, and I can echo that those are all not just legitimate shops, but big boy shops, uh, so to speak. That's awesome to hear. We're lucky.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Yesway. Um, anything else in regards to this particular matter? Seeing none? I will move on to item D, which is a report on the upcoming project scope and budget conference. Mary Ann, do I turn this to you?
Yes, I'm, I'm happy to take that question. Um, we received the draft today. There's been a lot of correspondence back and forth. You have to appreciate that the uh, the submission is well over a thousand pages. Uh, this is pretty standard practice. What we're doing is answering questions, providing clarification anywhere that, you know, they might not see something in the submission, but they're not looking in maybe the correct place, et cetera. So we've been uh, very engaged in that process. Um, we don't have a final number. We have a draft. Uh, I'm, I'm pretty happy, but always looking for more for the district. I'm pretty happy that uh, we were within about one percent in our projections about reimbursement. And certainly with the opportunity with the new green program, um, the, the district is probably gonna recognize an additional uh, differential of maybe one and a half million to two. I can't really say until we finish these discussions and that we're also um, being uh, the design team in Scanseka a little bit of a squeaky wheel with the MSBA, uh, asking them to reconsider um, certain categories that even though we're not a vocational school here, there are some vocational programs. And if we can get any relief on uh, them accepting uh, the square footage that um, we think would align with, with um, their policy. That's what we're working towards. So it's, it's a moving target right now. But we anticipate that as, as a group that will be able to um, have our project scope and budget conference on August first uh, at uh, one thirty in the afternoon with the MSBA. And I think they'll, you know, I, by the time we get there, like all the sausage making is happening up until that point. And, and then they will draw a line in the sand and say this is the project funding agreement. And um, and what this group needs to understand is that uh, there needs to be um, authority given to uh, the parties to execute this agreement because we do not get to the MSBA Board of Directors meeting without executing that document. And that document would be executed by the um, Chair of the School Committee, the CEO, the Superintendent, and also the Chair of the School Building Committee. So um, that would be a next step that when they send us that document, um, we would, we would want to know that these individuals have the authority to execute the document. And that's, and, and that's our ticket, so to speak, um, to getting to the meeting. If we, if, if that document doesn't get executed, we don't get to the, the August thirtieth board meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Wills. Go ahead, Mr. Skansky.
Uh, what's the timeline for, what's the S? I know you don't, you can't tell exactly, but about when would that document need to be signed?
Uh, my understanding is probably no later than around August first. Um, we would have, you know, in an ideal world, we would have been having a conversation tonight reviewing that agreement. But because of the new green policy, it, you know, we took a detour along the way. And I think it was a detour well worth it. Um, to try and stay the course and, and, and make it to the same meeting and enjoy the benefit of the additional reimbursement. So it's, it's a little bumpy and awkward right now. Um, but that's what happens when a new policy comes along and I think we reacted very well to, to vet this.
It might be bumpy, but it's a no-brainer. And for two point three million dollars net with actually no expenditure. It might be bumpy, but it's a no-brainer. And for two point three million dollars net with actually no expenditure, giddy up.
Yep.
So thank, thank you.
Sure. But I will say it's, uh, I believe it's between one point five and two point three.
Don't let facts ruin a good story.
Ms. Skansky, do you have to do further?
Um, do, do we, does that mean we need to schedule additional meetings? Uh, are, is, I don't know what the school committee schedule is, but do they need to schedule another meeting in order to do this authorization properly?
I don't think so. I, I just think that, you know, not knowing who has the authority here and whether they need to get additional approval for this, um. I mean, we're discussing it at this meeting now. I don't, I don't see why they wouldn't.
Yeah, I guess my question is more to the school committee and the school administration rather than, than you.
Okay.
Uh, to, to provide the answer for that.
Um. Man, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question. What do we, what do we, this, what, what is this? Uh, actually, Ms. Skansky, maybe you could just explain. What, what is it that you're looking for the district?
Well, what I, what I heard is that that, that the chairman of the school committee needs to be authorized to sign this document. And I don't know if that requires a special meeting or if it's just by virtue of, of her being the chairman of the school committee, that that's enough. That's my question.
Alright, um, and Mary Ann, we don't really have a ready answer to that question at this point, correct?
Uh, I rely on what's, what's local here. Um, there are some things we do here that we don't necessarily do in other communities, um, where authority is granted. But to, to your point that you, that we are authorized to submit the amendment to the Project Scope and Budget Agreement and to the submission. So, um, I don't know if you need approval to, to execute what you authorized to submit already.
Um. In that case, could we not just take a motion at this time to grant authority to, I guess that's, I've, I've really have prerogative to grant authority to the chair. So I'm a little bit of a, I'm in a bit of a quandary on this one. Um, when does that have to be signed, Mary? You said August first?
We, we don't have it, but I was told that, I was told by the MSBA that they wanted us to, you know, once they had the Project Scope and Budget Agreement, that, that we needed to turn things around quickly. Of course, we don't, we don't have it. So I can't, you know.
Well, I think that we, we meet on August second, the school committee does. And so perhaps if you need us to act, you need to, so you're leaning on us to tell you if we need that authorization, but I think you're getting some crickets here because we lean on you. So.
Well, I don't know what, I don't know what authority you folks have. I don't know if this is a question for your local attorney, but certainly when the Project Scope and Budget arrives and they're looking for it to be executed, I don't know if, if these four individuals will show up and execute it, or if you think you need to have a meeting about that to get the authority to execute it. You may already have the authority. I, I just, I don't know.
So Mary, maybe I'm a little bit confused here because I, you were talking about the uh, report on the upcoming Project Scope and Budget Conference. Did, did you segue into item E with the guy in discussion on the um, Project Scope and Budget Agreement? Is this what we're talking about?
That, I think I did, yes.
Oh, okay. Alright.
Sorry about that.
I'm still on item D and we've already gone to item E. Okay. Well, so the agenda does provide, um, for, uh, I guess it'll be a, a vote to authorize superintendent schools to execute the Project Scope and Budget Agreement, Chair President of the School Committee, CEO of Superintendent Schools, or the District Committee Chair to execute Exhibit A, total project budget, and um, same for Exhibit H, which is the reimbursement rate certification. So, um, I guess, was this not added to the agenda to get an affirmative vote to authorize those individuals, those three individuals to execute those, that agreement and those two exhibits to the agreement?
Y- yes, if, if, if a vote and authorization is required.
Okay. So my only question is, is in, I don't think that, my, I have not seen it. I don't know of any of the members of the community here, but uh, Exhibit A and Exhibit H, do you have those? Can you, can you pull those up and?
Uh, let's see. I don't have anything from the MSBA. I'd have to show you a, a template.
Alright, that'll suffice.
Okay.
Mary Ann, isn't it true that um, A and H are the things that you are now renovating based upon our authorization tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So, and it, and it will be final by the first because that's when you have to give it to them at that meeting.
They're gonna give it to us at that meeting. And, and hopefully we would get something in advance of that meeting. Hang on one second. I'm just looking for, um, an earlier email. See, while I look for the, uh, Project Scope and Budget, do you have an Exhibit A and H handy or not? If you don't, I understand.
I do, so.
Okay.
Um, Exhibit A. Now, I put in some, um, I did fill in some samples, so just know that this is just a sample. Um, and I was just pointing, let me share my screen real quick. Okay, can you guys? Alright, can you guys, can you guys see this?
Uh, yeah. Oh, there it is. Okay.
Okay, so this here is just taken straight up as uh, Leah said, from um, from the schematic uh, submission, schematic design submission. So this would be updated based on what Mary Ann uh, mentioned would be, this would be coming from the um, from the MSBA. So this would be what the Exhibit A would be. So it, it is the total project budget. So, if you guys see that.
But see, they, they create this based upon what you submit.
Correct.
And based on the, the back and forth that Mary Ann has been talking about, you know, and us, you know, trying to work on getting more, um, more of the reimbursement or trying to, so, so this would be, like, this column here would be adjusted um, in terms of what's gonna be qual- can you guys see my cursor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so this here is what we, um, what they will fill out and then what, um, what the bottom line would be right here. So this, this is where, um, where when we go have their meeting, it'll be, it'll be, uh, this will be filled out to what, um, to what they, they were saying is that they will go ahead and reimburse us for. And so then these are the signatures. You know, Joe signed, uh, Kurt and Leah as the chair. So that's Exhibit A, um, and then hold on, let me pull up. Exhibit H, can you guys, uh, can you guys see Exhibit H?
Yes.
Okay. So this here was, um, it'll be look, it'll look something similar like this. This came from, um, uh, this came from the, from the, your feasibility study agreement. So this'll get updated, you know? For, and I just filled in, you know, subsequent to what, um, I mean, before we had, you know, before we had the, the green school policy. So this would be, this would be going up to fifty-five percent. So, so this will also would be updated for, and that's the Exhibit H.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Zing.
Alright, so, um, Mary Ann, eh, you need some form of authority for the, um, school committee chair to execute Exhibits A and H. And um, I think the committee would have authority to grant me signatory authority. I don't know if this, I don't think this committee, the only thing this committee can do is recommend to the district committee that Ms. Viverito signed the, um, the agreement on behalf of the district. Um, and that leaves Kirk sort of in a gray area. I think as CEO, he would have authority from this committee to sign that. Go ahead, Kirk.
I just have a quick question from my own understanding. So, Mary Ann and C, the requirements of these documents are for those specific people to sign off on them. So by default, aren't they given authority because that is the roles in which they hold?
I would think so.
So if it's, if it's a requirement that the chair of the school committee signs off on the document, I think it's redundant to give the chair of the school committee authority because you're already voted in and approved as the chair, just as early on in the project, I was voted and approved as the CEO. So if those are, those signatures are required and it points to those documents, it seems to me we already did that very early on in the process. But I'm, I'm just posing that.
Okay.
Alright, so well, it, given your proposition, Superintendent, that would mean that we really wouldn't need to take any action on any of these items at this time. So, um, I'm gonna leave, I'll leave the last word to you. Alright, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Viverito.
So I guess, um, we have regularly defaulted to granting authority through the district committee just to be on the safe side multiple times. Would it be okay if that hap- if they granted authority on August second and all the signatures happened on August third? Mary Ann, is that timing, um, not okay?
Um, I imagine that timing probably is okay. I would have to verify again with the MSBA because they've been giving me a deadline of, um, if, if we're not gonna see this until August first, then, then it only makes sense that it would take a day or two to do that.
And so I see no harm, Joe, in maybe going the more cautious route, just in case, and having this committee grant, or rather, recommend to the district committee that these people are authorized to do the signatures. And then we add that to the agenda on the second.
That's fine with me. Go ahead, Ms. Skansky.
Well, you know, I, I was just posing the question before, but I've, I've gotta say, I, I agree with Superintendent Kirk. Is that if the MSBA is requiring the executive, the school committee chair, and the school building committee chair to sign these documents, then there's nothing to authorize. Those are the people who have to sign the documents. And so my, my question is, is, it, it seems to be very simple. Are those the required signatories for that?
Yes.
Yeah, there you go.
Then I don't think there's anything to discuss. It's a requirement that they be signed by the school committee chair, by the, by the CEO, and by the s- uh, school building committee chair. And, um, there's nothing that the school building committee or the school committee can do to change that. So I don't, I don't see the need to authorize anything.
I'm gonna, so, Ms. Ritter, you, um, you felt, you feel otherwise. So I'm gonna leave it, as I often do, to the will of the committee. Um, I take no position on this whatsoever. So, um, if, uh, Leah, if you wanna make a motion in that regard, or if you just wanna throw caution to the wind, I'll leave it to your discretion at this point.
I do not ever throw caution to the wind, and therefore I will make a motion uh, that this committee make recommendation to the district committee to authorize the individuals um, identified in Exhibit A and Exhibit H to sign and execute the agreements.
Alright.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Um, okay, this motion is made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this particular matter?
So in essence, basically, all we're, oh, I think, Leah, all you're, you're getting to is that we as a board should look at it and, and say, yes, these are the numbers that we've seen. And we're okay for, for these people to, in their, in their positions to sign. Just, just so that there's something going back to this board recognizing that those numbers are what we're expecting. Is that, in essence, what you're, I, I, cuz like, I see both sides. They, they have the right to sign it, but I think we, everything else we've done as a committee, we've said, hey, we've seen it, we're okay with it, now sign it. That's, and I think that that's all you're really getting at, correct?
Yeah, my motion would be to recommend to the district committee that they authorize us to execute the agreement. And ultimately, at the root of it, is my belief that I may have this position as chair, but I am not a single operator and that I only work, um, I only do things based upon the majority of our committee, which represents all three towns.
And, and is there any reason why we couldn't have basically a joint meeting on, even if it's, if we know we're getting it on the first, have it set up for the first, or do it for the second, and do what we're doing now so that we're just recording it at the end of the, and at the end, you guys can then all get together and sign it? It's just, it's just formality, but I think it is saying that we've all looked at it, we're okay with it. I mean, like, like I said before, we've all spent a lot of time on this up to date. I think, you know, it's just a matter of, of course, that, as a committee, we're saying, yep, we're good with it still.
Yeah, I mean, we, the school committee meets on the second. And so what I'm saying is that this motion would um, encourage, if voted upon, this motion would tell the district committee that this committee feels it's appropriate for those four people to execute, or three people to execute.
Go ahead, Ms. Skansky.
Um, I, I don't see any possible universe where this committee or the school committee chooses to disagree with what the MSBA has told us they will offer us. So I, I don't know that a review of this committee prior to signing it is, contributes anything. If, if it does, I need that explained to me. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy to just authorize those people to sign it.
Thank you, Ms. Skansky. Um, is there any further discussion on the motion? Alright, um, seeing none, I'm gonna call the roll. Ms. Viverito?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Skansky?
Yes.
Mr. Fromer?
Yes.
Ms. Kendall? That was Kristen. Alright, Ms. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Yesway?
Yes.
Mr. Eckle?
Yes, affirmative.
Um, Ms. Rich?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Superintendent Downing?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. Um, thank you, uh, for your time this evening. Uh, that completes our agenda for this evening. And, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at this time. Go ahead, Mr. Fromer. Go ahead.
Just, I, I just wanna, I, I wanna make sure that Leah and, um, Amy, my frustration is not at, at you, and I know you guys are working hard and trust me, I just, sometimes I get, I don't like bureaucracy, clearly. Um, and when it gets in the way of what I feel is right and we're, we're trying to do, sometimes I get a little, uh, animated. But it's not directed at anyone in this, and I know that everybody on this board has put a lot of time and effort into that. I just wanted to say that because I know sometimes I can, uh, come off a little, um, aggressive at times, maybe. But it's, it's in a good place, and I know you guys are working hard. So I really do appreciate that. Um, and I, I just wanted to say that so you understood.
Thank you, Mr. Fromer. Go ahead, Ms. Yesway.
Yeah, it might seem frightening, but I think as a private citizen to communicate your thoughts publicly, whether it is on Facebook, and I understand that can be a terminal, a turbulent type of a platform, or in the newspaper with facts. Um, I think getting the story out is better than not doing so. So, uh, if, if, I'm on this panel, but I'm a, I'm a private citizen too, and, and I don't mind taking that leap.
Thank you, Ms. Yesway. Uh, one last thing before we adjourn. Uh, Mary Ann, just to clarify, um, that, um, Project Scope and Budget Conference, that was originally scheduled for July twentieth, was it not?
Correct.
Yeah, and this was one of the compelling reasons why we wanted to move up our meeting to today so that we would have that, um, amendment vote in place for the Project Scope and Budget Conference. That was tentatively scheduled for uh, Thursday. But, uh, with all plans being subject to change, they went ahead and, uh, rescheduled that meeting to the beginning of August, correct?
Uh, yes, but there was a secondary reason, which is they would not have the Project Scope and Budget Conference without having this group's approval and without having received the revised documentation from the design team.
Got it. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Leah.
Um, just really quickly to my earlier point, um, on August first, at that project budget scope meeting, um, the school committee does not need to attend. Is that right, Mary Ann?
No, no, but, um, no, 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 no. And, you know, I- And, you know, I, I invited, because you're gonna be a signatory on the document, I invited you as Chair, I invited Kirk and um, and Mr. Gleason as well. Because you folks, the signing a document, I thought it'd be nice that you understood and knew what you were signing and be part of that meeting.
Yeah, and I think I am very happy to attend that meeting. I think that the rest of my committee is asking questions about what they're responsible for and what they need to be at and what they need to be doing, and they wanna do their best job. Um, so anyway, just again, creating that list of, that to-do list of all the things that have to happen in the next eight, eight weeks is so important for people who are not as plugged in as the rest of us. That would be super helpful.
Yeah, we, we just need you three folks there.
Okay.
And the design team and C and I.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. So um, I anticipate this meeting was gonna be about ninety minutes, and we are at minute ninety-one, so we're pretty close. So at this point, I would entertain a, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fromer. Alright, one last time. Ms. Viverito?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Skansky?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Yesway?
Yay.
Mr. Echol? Alright, Rich is?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Ms. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Superintendent Downing?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you again for uh, coming out a little bit earlier this week, and um, we will see you next.